Hey, how are you? How's everybody doing?
I'm doing all right.
Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. All right.
I'll pull it down and have VR report right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. When do you head to Florida?
February 1st. Well, what happened was I got invited to get my vaccine shot. So I had to wait till the second shot, which was today.
Okay.
So I'm leaving at 6:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Okay. How did they, how did the shot go? Did you have any pain or anything?
First, the first one I had absolutely no pain. If you asked me where I had it done, I would have said left arm, but I couldn't point to the spot.
Oh.
And never had any discomfort with it. So it's too early to tell right now, but so far, okay. Everybody usually says they run into something on a second day.
Okay.
The nurse told me that she get, she had a little bit of a headache right in the middle of her forehead. She says it wasn't really bad. It was just, it just reminded me that it was there, just enough to be annoying. I don't even tell you, I'm really tired. We'll see.
Yeah, hopefully it goes.
I'll sleep on her own, let the wife drive.
Okay.
Till we get to a gas station, then I gotta pull into the gas station.
Yeah. Does she like driving the truck with the big camper?
Yeah, she, she was a little nervous at first. She used to drive the motorhome all the time. And, but you know, this is different.
Yeah.
So, so at first I started having her just go straight from like rest area to rest area. And she's getting a little better now, but she, she likes pulling, she likes it.
Good.
Just, just wears you out. So you gotta share driving because you gotta stay focused more.
Yeah, you see that every once in a while where you got a truck and a fifth wheel camper and then a boat behind that and you think, oh, how do you back that up?
Uh, I'm staying there and hook the boat first. It's something that I won't be doing.
Oh, I won't either.
I'm trying something new. So if you guys can't hear me, let me know, like wave or something. So I can fix my microphone. Yeah, something like that.
Well, Troy, I guess you're gonna have to meet love by yourself. I won't be there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. We'll have to, we'll, we have to do it for the date with them. We couldn't get a lot of, we couldn't get a couple of people to meet with them.
All right. They probably don't want to wait till the end of March, so.
Probably not, no.
By the way, did you get my email on again, my comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody else have the screenshot of the American flag covering up Keith?
No.
I've got screenshot of the flag there. It's not covering up. It's right in the middle. I asked him to do that.
Well, you're looking better, Keith. No, the only thing I see is Keith's name at the bottom. I don't see Keith, but.
At least I got that right.
I know what, I know what you look like.
I can see Keith and the American flag.
Oh, Keith's, the American flag is laid over Keith's screen for me, but I know what he looks like.
They don't see me and I'm not hearing anything.
I see you, Sue.
Sue, where are you? I'd see you.
It's a, it's a Cisco something. Should I go back and try again? You're muted. But I just don't, at first I saw my face.
I don't know. Can you log, yeah, just maybe log out and go back in. Oh, it says not syncing up here.
Sue, we can see you. Can you hear us? Maybe your sound isn't.
Sign in. Browse as guest. I don't know. Let me go. Oh, is that update now? Is that per? Okay.
What happens if I just turn this off?
Yeah.
We'll give Sue a minute to try getting back in here. Troy, did I read? We get to do this at least for another month and a half?
Yeah, this is gonna go till the, just about the end of March. So we've got, we get to do it some more.
This is Bob's fault.
Did we, did we ask the limit on?
And you click too fast.
So it's funny, you mentioned that our friends up in Harrow Township have clearly expressed that they found the limit. So we were eager to make sure we did not encounter that. So we have bumped ours up. I imagine if we get over 200, we may find the limit as well. So. But to be fair, I think that's the capacity of the boardroom. So we'd be in that situation in person as well.
Yeah. Well, in addition, the little pictures of everybody would be so small, we wouldn't be able to see who you were at even 100 on a screen. All right. Do we have Sue? I'm, I'm missing somebody over here. Is this Sue behind the American flag now?
Was there?
Sue, are you there?
No, I don't think she is.
We lost Mike Mitchell, too.
Oh, did we?
I'm here.
No, he's here. Look, he's there.
Yeah, I have, and I've always been good. And I can see them. I just can't get in.
I'm just waiting. Shall we wait to see if she can get in here for a minute?
Sure. Yeah, I'm gonna try giving her a quick call.
All right. I've actually been texting Sue, but she didn't pick up yet. So, yeah. I have found through the, through the agenda, the easier way than the email link. Is that how you guys are getting on?
Yes.
The agenda?
I, I used the link in the agenda.
Yeah.
I did the email link and it still worked just as good.
Okay.
She did not, she didn't answer. So she's very, very focused on trying to get in.
So. I'm texting with Sue a little bit, Troy. She said she can hear us. She's working on it.
Hi, guys. Is this me?
Yep.
Yes.
There should.
Sorry, I had to do it four times. I don't know what happened. Sorry.
Are we ready to go? You're fine, Sue. Not a problem at all. Not a problem at all. Are we ready?
Yep.
All righty, let's call the Planning Commission meeting of February 11th, 2021 to order at 7:03 PM. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of United States of America. To the Republic. For which is the claim. One nation. Under God.
Invisible.
With liberty.
Keith, would you like to take role, please?
Sure. Chairman Fox.
Here in Deerfield Township, Livingston County.
Hey, Mike Mitchell.
Here in Heartland Township, Livingston County.
Okay, Michelle LaRose.
Present from Heartland Township, Livingston County.
All right, Summer McMullin.
Here from Heartland Township, Livingston County.
All right. And I am here from Heartland Township as well. Sue Grissom.
Finally here, Heartland Township, Livingston County.
And Tom Murphy.
Present, Heartland County, from Heartland County, living, from Heartland Township, Livingston County. It's early. It's early.
I don't know. I was up early.
Yeah, completes roll call.
All right. Thank you very much for his approval of our meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All righty, I think we have Commissioner LaRose and Commissioner. Any changes to that agenda? As a favor, so, aye? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sounds good. Next, our meeting minutes from January 28th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve our meeting minutes from January 28th, 2021.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Void. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes? Seeing or hearing nothing, I will say, all those in favor, say aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Next up, call to the public, item six. Anybody here this evening wish to speak? We have another call to the public at the end also. Okay. Seeing or hearing none, we will close call to the public. Next up, item seven, this is a, a public hearing in a Heartland Township. We have a procedure that we follow for public hearings. In a moment, I'll open the public hearing up. We'll then turn the internet over to our meeting, over to our township planner. And then we will then ask anybody in the public that would like to address the specific topic of this evening's application. And then we will close the public hearing and then we'll return to a conversation between the planning commissioners and the planning director. So with that being said, I am going to open the public hearing at 7:07 PM. For the applicant, Heartland Township. The township is proposing zoning amendments to section 5.26.8. D. This is the sign section of the ordinance as it pertains to menu boards. And for the record, all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. With that, what I'd like to do is turn the meeting over to our planning director, Troy Langer.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a zoning ordinance amendment in our ordinance. It refers to a zoning ordinance text amendment. The township was approached by one of the local fast food restaurant business owners desired to replace their, their menu board with a digital LED style menu board that currently is not allowed in the township. And the planning commission was very interested in pursuing that for the business. Since then, we've had a number of other restaurants that also express interest in doing that. The planning commission sent this to the ordinance review committee to kind of examine it and research it a little further. And ultimately, the planning commission decided to go ahead with the ordinance amendment and propose to, to make changes. As you can see in the ordinance, that the ordinance can be amended under certain circumstances, such as if there's an error or there is a, an amendment to clarify some language that might be ambiguous. Or in this case, upon support and finding practices and similar technological items. And, and certainly this is within the authority of the planning commission to propose an amendment like this. And that's kind of in a nutshell, the background history. And then later on, I could certainly get into how the ordinance review committee came up with some of the standards they came up with.
Okay.
Can I add something? I was just wondering if I could add something.
Sure.
You sure? A little reluctant. Sure? I, I remember the committee, I just wanted to say that we only, we, we did actively pursue it, but after much thought, there was much reluctance, mostly for fear of precedent setting. But after we sat down and had and listened to everybody's, under commission concern, their concerns, we came up with this ordinance. I think everybody should be fairly happy with it. That's all.
Thank you, Keith. Now what we'll do is open public comments. I do see we have a few here with us this evening. Is there anybody that would like to make any statements in regards to this particular zoning application as it pertains to digital menu boards? I don't see any faces, so I'm not sure how to tell. I think we're good to close the public portion of this meeting. Public hearing portion of this meeting, and that would be done at a 7:11 PM. And now what I think we'll do, we will turn the floor back up. Typically, we'd go through the staff letter, which we do have dated February 4th, 2021. Typically, we'd go through that. I would walk us through that and we would add our comments and ask questions. But in this case, this one's a little bit different, by the way, it's written. So I think maybe what will be most productive is to turn the meeting over to Troy and allow him to address some of the specifics of the ordinance itself. And then at any point, if anyone has questions or comments, please feel free to add at that time. Troy?
Thank you. So this, this ordinance amendment involves adding some new technology that the township really hasn't seen. We're talking about essentially a big TV screen that's potentially up to six feet tall. And we've put some size limitations on how big it can be, but it's a 40 square foot TV screen essentially. And there's the potential of flashing, blinking, motion. And of course, these signs, you can't always predict where they're gonna end up. Some of them end up in places where they wouldn't cause problems and, and some of them end up where they could be disturbing or cause some concerns to neighboring residents. So the ordinance review committee looked at a number of other ordinances and a lot of that is attached in your packet for you to look at. But in addition, this one required doing some field visits and the ordinance review committee went out and physically looked at these type of menu boards. They do exist in other communities. And spent a lot of time just looking at how they work, how they look. I think ultimately, the ordinance review committee was very impressed and felt that overall, they actually are an improvement over the existing style of menu boards that, that we have here in Heartland Township. And with a lot of the other ordinances that exist, it looks like we were able to satisfy all of the potential concerns with avoiding any blinking or flashing or constant movement that could be distracting to oncoming vehicles or neighboring properties and so forth. So what you have now is the culmination of looking at several other ordinances and trying to identify places where this would be appropriate to be located. And so there's an amendment that's shown and basically this is just for the drive-through restaurants. And so other businesses that have a drive-through lane, this, this ordinance currently would not work for them or wouldn't permit them to have this style of a LED style sign. And we aren't making this the only option. If a restaurant wanted to have the traditional style menu board, that option still exists in this ordinance as well. The reason that the ordinance review committee decided to just limit it to just the restaurant, it really started to get complicated when we started to figure in drive-through banks that sometimes have five, six, seven lanes and other types of businesses that could have multiple drive-through lanes. For example, a Sonic restaurant where you don't truly have a drive-through lane to drive up and then you kind of serve in a, in a parking spot. The, the thought that the ordinance review committee had was at least initially, let's move forward with the drive-through restaurants. We've seen those in place. They're, they don't appear to cause any concerns, but let's see how this works and then possibly come back at a later time to open it up to other businesses. So that's how it just got limited to just the restaurants. And that's how these standards that you see there are kind of. And that's how these standards that you see there kind of got implemented into this draft.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Troy? For the public's benefit, we have met as a planning commission on this topic twice. So if some of this, if it seems like we should be asking some questions of our planning director, it is only because a lot of this has been worked out in two public meetings that we had prior to this. Anything before we point you in the direction of page one of the staff review letter dated February 4th, 2021? And a recommended action there at the top of the page, if you're so inclined to see. And if you're not inclined, we can bring this back at a future date.
Hi, can I just ask one question? I'm sorry, we did this so long ago. I just want to circle back to one thing.
Yeah.
Okay. So when I read the existing ordinance that we have today, it said, you know, for approved drive-throughs, they can have up to two signs. And each sign can be no greater than 32 square feet. Okay? When we read our proposed ordinance and we stick with just approved drive-throughs, our new ordinance says you're allowed one sign per drive-through lane. So you could have multiple drive-through lanes. You're allowed one sign per each drive-through lane. And now our sign, instead of being 32 feet, can now become 64. Am I understanding that right? We're allowing them not to stick with the two maximum and we're allowed each sign to become 64.
Yeah, what they're doing practically speaking anyhow, is taking the 232 square foot signs and putting them right next to each other where it, for all practical purposes, is just one sign that's 64 square feet. But they're, they're doing that in a, they, they would prefer to have one sign 64 versus one sign 32 and a second sign 32 somewhere else. So.
Okay.
What we did is just kind of lumped it in.
Yeah. And now if they have two drive-through lanes, they're allowed to have two 64 foot signs. Where before, sorry, you get two signs, 32 square feet maximum. But realistically, they need that. I just forgot that part of our whole study. I remember looking at the LED signs. They look great. Just like you said, we're like, wow, these are wonderful. But I forgot this initial part. I was just trying to recall. Thank you. Okay.
Further questions? Comments for Troy on this? Did you want to take action on this evening or not? If you do, as I said, it's on page one of the staff member memo. If not, we can certainly discuss that too.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval of zoning ordinance text amendment for 20-001 as outlined in the staff memorandum dated February 4th, 2021.
Support.
So we have a motion to recommend approval from Commissioner LaRose, second from Commissioner Grissom. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Just now move to the board soon.
Ah, no, this has to go to Livingston County Planning Commission and then to the board.
Yeah, I forgot.
If I said anything previously that was different than that, I apologize.
No, I forgot. Well, let's move on to item eight, call to the public. Anybody else that's logged in this evening wish to speak? All right. I'm not seeing any activity in that area. So let's move on to item nine, which is our planner's report. Anything Troy?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, and we touched on it a little earlier, but I'm not sure everyone was on. So these, I don't know what you call them, executive orders or orders from the state health department that are mandating that we cannot hold an in-person meeting. Well, they have now been extended. I can't remember the exact date. I think it's March 29th or something to that. Effectively, the end of March. So we will have to continue in this forum, in this way for some more meetings. So just to give you a heads up on that. Secondly, if you, I did send you guys an email from a member, Mr. Glenn Wilkinson. He had originally wrote a email for our last meeting. We were doing an amendment to our future land use map as well as the comprehensive development plan. And he had some questions about how the bonus for the special planning areas is determined. I had responded to him that the zoning ordinance and gave him the section of the zoning ordinance for a plan development, how that outlines the density. He's now responded in another email requesting that that language be included in the comprehensive development plan. I've, I've sent that email to you, so you all have had a chance to look at that. I guess my thoughts on that is that was, this is going beyond what our original focus of that amendment was. And certainly, we can hold on to this. And when we do the entire master plan in, in a few years, that could be something we could add to that discussion. So I wanted to share that with you and, and also share his comments, so you can see those for yourself as opposed to me trying to explain it. And then lastly, the ordinance review committee is doing some work on the amendment to the landscape ordinance. We, we did have a informal meeting and we are moving forward with that. So hopefully in the near future, you'll, we'll be getting a draft to the planning commission to, to examine. So that's it.
Okay. Item 10 is committee reports, comments. Anyone have anything to add this evening? Questions, comments?
I have a question for Troy. When you send that off to the county for review, are you going to need my signature? Yeah, yes. They have that form. Can you do that, the email, send it to me and then I can? Or you can take the approach we took the last time and said, form to follow. I, I will, we'll work that out. I'll get in touch with you later. If not, maybe I could just have the chair sign it. It, it just, so everybody knows, when you send stuff off to the county, they have this little form that they want filled out. It kind of has the dates that it was at the planning commission meeting. And they want it to be signed by the secretary of the planning commission. So when I sent the future land use amendment off, I had to have member Void sign that. So he's, he's now just asking about this amendment, since I got to send it off in a form. I got to do it again. So.
Okay. Any other comments? If you'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Commissioner Void and Commissioner LaRose. All those in favor say aye. Pose nay. All right. Good luck, everybody. Two weeks. See you in a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.